He's gonna get up and give a presentation on the entire budget. And as soon as that's done, I'm gonna ask for public. But this man that's still here, she has to be first to order. Oh, yes. What I'll do is I'll say, we're now taking input from our public. We'll let you guys get up, say your two cents. Because I'm sure we'll hear about the senior senator, the chairman of the police department. A lot of folks will.
Guys, ready? Great. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. May we have the roll call, Ms. Lewis?
Good evening. We'll start with Councilmember McKee.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner is absent. Councilmember Wojcik.
Here.
Councilmember Hatch.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Croft.
Here.
Mayor Mollie.
Here.
Our first order of business is presentation by staff and discussion. Excuse me. Presentation by staff and discussion regarding the fiscal year 2015-2016 proposed budget by Mr. Joe Duffy, our finance director. And, oh, Mr. Smith is going to lead the way. Before Mr. Smith leads the way, I wanted to let our audience know that we are going to ask for audience participation after Mr. Duffy is done with, or Mr. Smith and Mr. Duffy are done with the proposed budget. Mr. Smith, as you bring the budget process up on the board there, would you entertain questions at the end of each slide, or would you rather do the entire presentation? Your call.
Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions whenever they come up.
Okay. All right. If our council members would please wait till the end of each slide, and that way he can get us down to the bottom and we'll walk right through, because I imagine our audience has a question or two, or at least a few thoughts to share. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I am thrilled to be here. It has taken so much work to get us to this point where we can have this discussion. And I'm gonna go through some of that as we go, but in no other time in Chino Valley's history have we had this kind of command over where we are, what we've done, and where we're going. And it's just phenomenal that our staff has been able to provide us with this. The budget process this year's gonna be a little different. In the top left, I've got revenues in green, but instead of looking at just 2015, we're gonna look at five years. Over on the right, operating expenditures, we're gonna look at five years of operating expenditures. And you'll see some red stuff in there. I apologize for the small print. I wanted it all in one slide. We're gonna be offering some thoughts to council as we go through our expenditures budget on programs that might be trimmed, or ways that we might save the town some money. In the orange, we're gonna start looking at capital expenditures and capital reserves. In the past, you've not had a capital improvement budget, and we're gonna do that across a five-year span. At the bottom, council created a strategic plan last year. And we're gonna be looking at the goals and objectives of that plan and the price tags that are associated with it to give council the opportunity to look at the priorities it has and decide what it wants to fund.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Smith, this packet that you just handed out to us was not online. Will it be available online for the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, in summary, we're gonna look at revenue projections. Those revenue projections will be based on a revenue manual that we've developed over the last two years. And the revenue manual details how we go about figuring out how much money we're gonna have. We're gonna look at operating expenditures, capital expenditures and reserves, and the strategic plan to see what we need to do to balance the budget, and not just across one year, but five. And the exciting thing is, up until now, Chino Valley has only looked at what's in that red box. Every year that the budget has been brought to council, we've only looked at the red box. And that is not enough information for a town this size to program what it's going to achieve over the next five years with limited resources. We're very excited about being able to bring this approach to budgeting to you. It took a lot of work to get here. Staff had to create a new budget format, capture a lot of data, and begin to look at performance comparisons. We had to install some software, create some new reporting. We actually tackled debt management and aging and collection management, and we've been accessing grants and WIPA funds to help the town patch itself together. Council's been hard at work as well. Council, early on, jumped into a strategic financial plan to adjust our revenues so that we could survive. Council looked at the reserve policy and strengthened the town's reserve policy so that we won't get into this mess again. There's a strategic work plan that was mentioned earlier so that council can incrementally work towards goals and objectives and, over time, move the town forward. We just finished the wastewater treatment plant negotiation and refinancing, and we're in the middle of working on the Prescott Water Acquisition, both of which will provide relief for the utilities and get them off the general fund. This is gonna be a complicated slide. The red line, starting in February of 2012, we began looking at our finances. And in May of 2012, we came to council and we said, this red line is what it's gonna look like if we don't change something soon. And, yes, sir?
Could you, for our audience, please explain to them what E O Y, end of year?
I'm sorry, end of year. The financial year here goes from July 1 to June 30, so we're not on a calendar year. When you look at this chart, you'll see that that red line crosses the zero line in 2013-14. We were worried about that, but we were more worried about solvency. The town has to carry about $1 million. Yes, sir?
What's the zero line?
The zero line is you have no more money left in the bank. You can't make payroll. The red line there is what you call solvency. You have to carry so much money in your accounts to keep your operation going day by day. We have to have about $1 million on hand to meet our bills in a timely fashion and meet payroll. If you look at where that red line crosses, the down-curved red line, you've got a problem in early 2013. And this was May of 2012 that we started the conversation. We had to do something quick. To council's credit, they made changes, and the blue line is what resulted. Now, the gray area off to the right is the future. We don't know about that yet, but that blue line is what we've been living since we made the changes from council's strategic plan. The dashed green line are the reserves that we have on hand in the general fund should there be a downturn or an emergency and we need to address a problem. The last piece of our recovery is the Prescott Water System. And we know that when that system is joined with ours and those additional utility accounts are added to ours, we will begin to see an uptrend because those additional ratepayers will pull the water fund off of the general fund's back. The question is, when will we get that system acquired? When will those people become our customers? When will that cash flow begin to flow through the town's coffers? We think, worst-case scenario, sometimes 17, 18 is about when that happens. But what if something happens to us? What if we're not able to create an agreement with Prescott? Our rate table is based on 435 additional customers coming to the town, and if that doesn't materialize, that blue line will continue on into the future, and our recovery will extend further out. However, oh, I forgot. This green dashed line I put in there, I told you this is gonna be complicated. That's the reserve policy. Council came forward and said, we're gonna have a stronger reserve. We're not gonna be in this position again. We need to carry this much money. If we can't get those users added to our system, that yellow area right there is gonna be our reserves getting chewed up because the water system is not breaking even. But if we're successful with the Prescott Acquisition, and we're able to do it when we think that we can, and we make the interconnects by December of this coming year, yeah, this coming year, we'll be able to add those accounts and turn the town's cash flow back in a positive direction. And so what concerns us now is this orange area. These are the reserves that are gonna get chewed up if we don't do something with our budget right now. Council could decide today. It's okay to chew up those reserves. We're okay with that. What we're hearing from economic consultants in Arizona is, you need to hold on to your reserves because we're not sure what's gonna happen this year. So that's the reason why staff is beginning to bring trimming ideas to council, because we're hearing that the reserves need to be there so that the town doesn't get in a bad position based on what the state or the Fed might do. But it's not up to us to make those decisions.
Do you have a question? Yes, sir.
Where do contingencies fall in here? I know we separated reserves and we had contingencies, and there's a big chunk of contingencies that could be used for other things.
Joe? Yeah, the contingencies are part of our total budget, so they're included in that blue line where our total expenses are. So we budget to spend them, even though the reality is in most years we don't. The general fund, for example, we budget $350,000 in contingencies. So far this fiscal year, we've only spent 47. So we will have $300,000 across our fingers between now and June 30 that we didn't spend.
So, and that's unallocated. That's money that hasn't been used.
That is correct.
And it's not allocated for a particular purpose.
That is correct.
We'll have $300,000 at the end of this fiscal year.
Yeah. And to use it, we'll have to bring it to council. Now, both the water utility and the sewer utility also have a small contingency amount, you know, $30,000, $40,000.
Thank you.
But the general fund's a big one.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith. Last year, when we hit that gas line, how much contingency was used up?
Was that like 180? Was that that much? About 120,000.
120. I remember it was a pretty big ticket.
Yeah, we used quite a bit of our contingencies last fiscal year. We had several things that hit, but the gas line was the big issue.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So does that contingency, if we, you have 300,000, is that what you're gonna use for next year for your contingency? Or is it additive?
Yeah, the financial policy requires 5% of the general, in the general fund, in fact, all the funds, 5% of the expenditures. So we round it up a little bit, a few thousand, to get to a nice even number. So it'll be approximately 350,000 next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, in looking at this picture, staff's been trying to figure out, how can we operate without spending the money in the orange area? And that's where our recommendations are coming from. If council decides that the reserve funds are okay to spend towards those types of things, we're happy to budget that. But I'll show you a couple of things a little later on on why we're making recommendations otherwise. Who's the town serve?
Excuse me, Mr. Smith?
Yes?
I do have a question. You said December of the coming year. Now, do you mean the coming year 2016 or this coming December 2015?
2015, December 2015, we would, if we can get the Prescott Acquisition inked this spring, then 2015 would be when we would flip the switch and bring those ratepayers into our system.
Thank you.
I wanted to talk a little bit about who we serve as a town. A lot of people know that the town of Chino Valley's about 11,000 people. But what people don't think about often are all of the people who are immediately outside of our town boundaries, who also use many of the town services. And so this is an ESRI projection. They do a lot of work with census data. This map shows the blue areas a 20-minute drive time, and that number's, you know, really high. It's like 53,000 people within a 20-minute drive time. And that does include the 11,000 people in Chino Valley. But if you were to look at the 15-minute drive time outside of Chino Valley, you're still looking at about 20,000 people. So within this economic market of the people just inside of Chino Valley and the people around us, there's about 30,000 here. As far as I know, we're the only community in the Quad Cities area that has way more people living outside of it, immediately outside of it than inside of it. And that presents some stresses to us as a service provider. This year's the first year that we're actually able to talk about operational performance and comparisons, and I wanted to bring you guys just some general information. We took the League of Municipalities survey information and compared ourselves to other towns of similar size. Joe pulled this information out of the survey. There's 13 towns here, including us. We're in red in all of these charts. That red line across the graph serves only to give you a point of reference. That's just the top of our chart so that you can get a graphic feel for things. If you look at the total budget versus population, and here in population, I'm using 11,000 people within the town's limits. Chino Valley actually has a smaller average budget. So we're a little bit lower per person than the other towns in the area, the other towns that are comparable to us. It's not a lot, but we are running our government fairly lean. We don't have quite as much money as the average town within this dataset. If you look at general funds in particular, our general fund operates a little bit too lean, and you might expect that because we know that the utilities are taking money from the general fund in order to operate. And you look at this, it's about 20% we're under on our general fund side. That makes it very difficult for us to provide the kinds of things that general funds provide, which is everything but water and sewer. So police, senior center, recreation, all of those things come out of the general fund. And unfortunately, our general fund runs a little lean. When you look at the headcount we have here in Chino Valley running the government, and you look at that as a proportion of the number of citizens that are served, and here, again, I'm using 11,000 people, not the larger market area, we actually support way more citizens per employee than the average town in our area. We're about 20% higher in the number of citizens that we support and serve per employee. If you look at headcount, and this runs back to the '05 year, the red line is where we stand today. I got here mid-FY, financial year 12. I got here in February of 12. We've held our headcount pretty consistent, or actually depressed it somewhat over the time period that I've been here to try and hold the budget low. And we're actually staffed with pre-2004 levels of headcount. We're getting an awful lot out of our employees here. If you...
Yes, sir.
What is the actual headcount, total staff?
120-some-odd souls. If you add two half-times together to get a full-time, that's where the full-time equivalents come from.
Somewhat, I heard recently that we had like 79 employees.
Well, we have about 120-some-odd employees. And Joe, do you remember what payroll? 89 FTEs, but he's asking total bodies. Right. And seasonal does change it, but we are at, let me see if I can back this up.
She said 89 FTEs?
The numbers that I got from Joe were we're at 90 FTEs today.
Does that include recent hires?
Yes, sir. These numbers are accurate as we stand today.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith. Say you have in a department four half-time employees that shows up as two full-time, two FTEs.
Yes, sir.
I needed our audience to understand that. Thank you.
If you look at the average cost per employee, Chino Valley's actually a little bit low. We're pretty competitive. We're just under the average. This shows about 10% low, but we do have a four-day work week. We have pretty good benefits. I'm not gonna say that we're not competitive. We are. But we are right there in the hunt with the average line. If you look at police department costs per person in Chino Valley, and again, I'm using 11,000 people, we're actually much lower. Our police department operates a full 25 to 30% lower than the communities that you would compare us with. And they have a particular challenge in policing Chino Valley because of the variety of terrain that has to be dealt with. Not only do we have Highway 89, which has 23,000 trips a day, we've also got rural areas where, if you're way out Perkinsville Road in the middle of nowhere, your officers are taken offline to answer out there, and they can't get back here in 10 minutes. It takes some time. So our guys do an awful lot of police work. They provide great service to the town of Chino Valley, and they do it for far less than the communities in this dataset.
Yes, sir.
Now, these calculations per cabinet are just within the confines of Chino, or is that that expanded area that you showed earlier?
The, all of these are based on 11,000 people. And that is a good point, because there are quite a few people that live outside of town that come to town and, you know, they can create trouble, too. There are a total number of people traveling up and down 89 that don't live here. There's 23,000 cars or trips a day on that road. We do have a lot of visitors passing through Chino Valley.
Okay. Excuse me for a second, Mr. Smith. There was a lady in the audience that had a question. If at all possible, we need to do the entire presentation. Could you go ahead and ask your question, ma'am?
Are you saying that the town of Chino Valley Police Department goes outside of the city limits?
Okay, for, excuse me, for the recording, the lady in the audience asked, are you saying that our police officers in the town of Chino Valley go outside the city limits? Is that correct, ma'am?
There are times when they do. There are times when they're requested. We have mutual aid agreements where if there's a call and we're needed, we go. But that's reciprocal, and there are times when we need help because we don't have enough officers on standby and we get help from others. We also have officers that are involved in narcotics and gang task forces that are multi-jurisdictional. It's not just the town of Chino Valley, but it's the county and the other police jurisdictions as well. So, yes, we do have police officers that do go outside of the town limits.
Okay.
The requests for mutual aid come from the other law enforcement agencies that are dispatched through the dispatching service at the county.
Okay. That's it for our questions out of the audience. We do need to understand that the town extends far to the east of Highway 89, but heading west, we stop at Reed Road, so. And there's probably a criminal or two at the other side of Reed Road. Go ahead, sir.
So the upshot of the message really is, our police department's doing a heck of a job on a shoestring budget. This is a complicated slide, but I want to walk us through this. The town of Chino Valley adopted a personnel pay and a compensation plan several years ago. And that plan came before council. That plan outlines what the minimums and the maximums are that people can make here. It sets out ranges and steps for each job, and there's a job description, and all of our people are put into the correct range and steps. In this chart, that blue line is the low part of the pay scale. So let's see if I can pull this up. Yeah, so this blue line here for these positions is the low end of their pay scale. This red line, according to the plan that was adopted in 2012, is the top of that pay scale. These pay scales have not been adjusted since 2012. These are the tops and bottoms of the plan that was put in front of council back in 2012. The green lines represent the pay that each department head is receiving today. So these are accurate as of payroll right now. And the purple line is the average compensation for those positions across those same towns that we're talking about in all of these comparisons. The purple lines are the average pay for that position. The green line is our existing pay for our staff. Most of our staff make less than average. We have one or two staff members that make more than average, but they are within the plan. And these staff members have 20 to 25, 26 years of experience. They're senior staff, and in some cases, they've been asked to manage and direct more than one effort. So I think the takeaway from this slide is that our people are not overpaid. They are within plan, and in fact, most of them are somewhat under the averages that were produced in the 2015 survey.
Yes, ma'am.
This is League of Cities. It's not compared to other cities of our size.
It is. It's compared to the same 13 towns that all the other charts were used. This is a chart about what we spend on recreation versus what Prescott and Prescott Valley spend on recreation. The white number at the top of the bar, oh, sorry. The white number at the top of the bar is how much Chino Valley pays per person in Chino Valley. So I'm using 11,000 people there. The town of Chino Valley spends $66.16 on recreation every year. Prescott spends about $70. Prescott Valley spends about $50. When you look at their general funds, that works out to be about 8% of Prescott and Prescott Valley's general funds. It works out to 9% of our general fund because, again, our general fund is under attack and it's smaller than it should be. So we are spending, in terms of proportionality, we are spending about what other communities are spending. It's just, it's eating up more of our general fund right now because our general fund isn't healthy.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith. When you say recreation, aquatics, and parks, we're talking baseball fields?
Yes, sir.
The swimming pool? What other recreation stuff is covered by that?
Cecilia, Ron? Yeah, all the parks maintenance, all of the facilities maintenance, the operation of the programs, the ball fields, the pool, everything that you would associate with public use of town space is included in that number.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Is library included in that, too, or is it separate?
No, the library is separate.
Thank you.
So I guess in capping the operational performance of our business unit, we're doing the right things. We recognized early on that we had a problem, and we took action to fix that so that the operation wouldn't have a problem with sustainability. And in looking at the performance metrics across our personnel, our administration, you can see that we're running pretty lean and we're competitive, and we're not overstaffed. The staff here is turning things around, but there are some other things that have to be completed in order for us to be financially stable. We're running with fewer employees. We're running with a good headcount. We're running with lower pay, and we are still funding all of those things that we can appropriately. The challenge is the next 24 months. I had an occasion to participate in a presentation that Elliot Pollak and Jim Rounds delivered. It was about an hour-long presentation, and it was about where are we going from here with our economy? What's happening at the state? What is happening at the federal level? And one of the macro thoughts from that presentation was, you know, you have to pick your time strategically on when you're gonna transition. In a recession mode, you're very, very pessimistic, and you're controlling things very heavily. In a recovery mode, you're conservative but hopeful, and you're guarded. And then in a growth mode, you're fairly optimistic. The question is, when do we decide to transition? And how do we manage those expenses from pessimistic to conservative to optimistic? The budget process is where we decide how we're gonna do that. And forecasting, which is what staff does, is all about math and models and numbers. We can provide... We can provide that, but we don't control what mode of risk we're going to be in, how we're going to manage spending. That's, that's based on what council decides is appropriate for the local government. And the council also gets input from the town so that the decisions and the direction the town takes fits the community. So staff's kind of like a calculator, we can provide scenarios all day long, but council has to help us understand what direction things need to go in. Economic indicators that went through this presentation, consumer confidence is up, but the Arizona job losses are troubling. We lost a significant portion of our construction jobs, and the jobs over the last several years that have been replaced were not construction jobs, they're lower-paying jobs. Arizona's recovery is bringing jobs back, but they're not the same quality jobs. And what I'm hearing from the economists is, until we begin to build back some of those higher-paying jobs, which is what the Commerce Authority is focusing on, we're still going to be in a little bit of a suffrage mode. This is a macro, this is a national graph here, I don't want you to think that this is Chino Valley, but nationwide, there's a trend, you know, children are coming back to the nest. This is specific to our area and parts north of us. Chino Valley's and Paulden, our, our per capita income up in this neck of the woods is way too low. The, their, people here just do not have the money to be able to buy the things that they need to buy. When you compare us to Yavapai County, for example, we're about thirty percent under Yavapai in Arizona, and about thirty-five percent under the U.S. average. That means there's not enough cash in the community to make things work. When you look at this area, there's an awful lot of people who aren't working, and for the people that are working, there's a significant number that are part-time, they're not working fifty-two weeks out of the year. This is disturbing because this is the working age population of sixteen to sixty-four-year-olds. What we need, we need jobs. We need paychecks coming into Chino Valley. We need people to be able to make a living.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you bring back the slide? I'm confused by your key underneath your per capita. You've got three shades of green, but there's only one shade on the graph.
Right, and, and I apologize for that. This, this thirty percent, the Chino Valley subregion is thirty percent less than Yavapai County's number. The Chino Valley subregion is twenty-nine percent less than the Arizona number, and the Chino Valley subregion is thirty-six percent less than the United States average. I'm sorry about the confusion there.
Thank you.
So the new normal.
Excuse me for a second.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
In, in the week's work for populations sixteen through sixty-four years, is that not a bit misleading to you, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds who are supposed to be in school and would not be working full-time positions?
If you were just going to look at full-time positions, yes, but this runs the range of zero work to part-time work to full-time work. So it's a complete subset of working age people. It, it would be possible, I think, to winnow out maybe some of these part-time numbers. You've got, what, fourteen percent here involved in work for less than maybe half of the year? But this is to show overall employment across the area, and so it does include part-time work.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
How much of that forty-seven percent is sixteen to seventeen-year-olds, sixteen to eighteen-year-olds?
I, I, I don't know. I couldn't tell you.
Because that could very well be the, the ones that are in school, if you're looking sixteen, seventeen-year-olds, because I don't know what percentage of sixteen or seventeen-year-olds actually work.
And I don't either. All we looked at was, are they old enough to work? And if that, if that's the full pool of eligible workers in the area, how many of them are working? I, I would say, if your teens are in this, in this forty-seven percent, I don't think that forty-seven percent of our population's made up by teens. And so I, I mean, it, it looks like it might be.
Looks like it tonight, yeah.
Any other questions? The new normal, and this was...
In a, in a moment, until we get this done, okay?
This was a really interesting set of points that, that we called from the presentation with Mr. Rounds. In general, the average expansion coming out of a recession lasts about five years. We're going to hit six years this summer in this expansion. And the question is, how many more years of growth before we see a little bit of a cushioning there? The, the elements that dampen a recovering all seem to be improving. So it looks like we may not see that, that relaxation there. We were reassured that a total nationwide implosion wasn't on the horizon anytime soon, but that was followed up quickly with, this is new territory. This economic environment is not what the old economic environment looked like, and so they cannot tell us that there aren't going to be surprise shocks or bubbles that surface that pop and knock things off the rails. So, so the, at the end of the day, their caution was that we should consider a conservative approach, hold on to our reserves, make incremental progress where it makes sense. If it makes sense to access one percent or two percent money to do something that has a lasting effect, maybe you do that, but you don't expose or over-leverage yourself. The, the state has a tough job, too. The state's got a one and a half billion-dollar budget gap. Education has been cut to the bone. They, they can't do what they need to do. Transportation doesn't have a plan, and there's a, a multi-billion, a sixty-something billion-dollar gap between what they've wanted to do and where they stand with their finances. There's no funds at the state level for economic development and tourism, and if we're going to recover, that, you know, that's where our bread and butter is as state. CPS has got to be restructured. How is this going to affect us at the local level? Well, according to these guys, the clock has been ticking. We, we're, we're six years into this expansion, and at some point, there is going to be a little bit of cushioning, not immediately, but at some point in time. So there's less and less time to plan for the downturn and build the reserves. And if you're a community out there and you don't have reserves in your pocket now, you're in trouble. There's less time to build infrastructure, take advantage of low interest rates, and create something that'll give you a lasting return. There, ultimately, the, the bottom line was, there's not as much time as there was six years ago to build financial sustainability. Thank goodness we've been working towards that for the last three years. It is a good time to invest in infrastructure that will engage future growth because of the price of money right now, and it is a good time to accumulate and maintain healthy reserves. This is my last slide, and I'll move on and get out of your hair. I wanted to go over some of the rules of the road that staff uses when we're contemplating making a financial recommendation to council. There are good cuts and bad cuts out there. And, and to tell you the truth, staff can provide you with numbers and finance, but we can't provide you with what it is that works and fits for the community. That, that's where the, the electeds have to fill that gap and hear from the community and incorporate that in the decision-making and direction for the town. I want to use Tuesday night as an example. If you look at the, the projects that were in front of council Tuesday night, the CDBG project, which is a repaving project in, in one of our neighborhoods, Center Street is an infrastructure improvement, we're going to push Center Street through so it actually will travel out to eighty-nine, and then the chip seal program to try and take care of the roads with the rest of the money that we have. And then there was a skate park project. The in-house costs for these projects are all stacked up here, about two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. If the town was to contract that work out and let it to bid, these are the prices that the town would have to pay to have all that work done. It was about two-point-four million dollars. So by contracting out, we have to develop bid materials, we have to do a hundred percent engineering, we have to engage the contractors, we have to pay a profit margin, there's a lot of stuff we have to pay. So in this set of projects that came before council, there was about two million dollars in savings that we were proposing by doing it in-house.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
However, our in-house cost does not include the cost of employees.
It does not, because they're already on staff.
And so if you were to compare, how much would the employees cost? I mean, how much are we paying the employees for doing this work? Because otherwise, if they didn't have work, you'd have to lay them off, so that would be money saved.
Actually, no. If these projects don't occur, those employees are off doing other things. We're using the town's existing staff to do roadwork. We've got parks maintenance guys that we pull off park maintenance work, and we have them out there with a shovel or a flag or whatever to help with the roadwork. So when you look at the maintenance burden for these projects, the maintenance burden for roadwork, you have to, you have to go back out and invest in that thing about every ten years.
Excuse me for a second, I believe you had one?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
When our guys are out on shovels and doing roadwork, et cetera, who is doing their job that they're pulled away from?
There are times when no one is. There are times when the, the guys who are out there maintaining the parks and the grass and all that stuff, it has to slide. There are times when that work is put off.
Do you hire...
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Do you hire temporary then to fill in when they're not doing it?
There are some times when we have money available that we can hire someone to come in for a couple of weeks, but that's not been the rule of thumb here. The, the rule of thumb here has been to try and push it until later. I, I think everybody remembers last year when we had all the weeds in the parks and we weren't getting all that, well, we were busy learning how to chip seal. So we're a little thin on personnel.
And for, for our audience's information, because you guys aren't here every council meeting, obviously, last year, we did the Road Force South Extension, which was a, a part of settling a lawsuit, just like this Center Street Extension is a part of that same lawsuit settlement. We took town forces that would be clearing weeds or painting buildings or whatever, we used them to help stave off a huge lawsuit that was against the town. So as, as Mr. Smith is, is explaining, we're stretched pretty thin, but we have to shuffle, shuffle folks to wherever the highest priority is at the moment, so.
So when you look at this set of four projects, the maintenance, the maintenance on the skate park would basically be none. You pour the concrete, you, maybe you sweep it once in a while, but no heavy maintenance for that. When you look at annual operational costs, aside from maintenance every ten years, you really don't have an operational cost on a road. The concrete pad for the skate park, there's no operational cost associated with staffing or anything like that. It, it's kind of out there and people use it as they will. Accessibility to these things, you know, roads are accessible twenty-four-seven, the skate park, too, would be accessible year-round, but people probably wouldn't want to use it in the rain or the snow. So there, it, it's not, you know, fully accessible year-round, but for the most part, it is. And then the source of funds for these projects, all of the road projects were coming from specific monies that were designed for that purpose. As well as the skate park, there was a specific set of money set aside for recreational expansion. So you're not coming off of the general fund to fund these things, you're using monies that have been set aside for this purpose, for that. So this was a set of projects that the town said, hey, the administration, I'm sorry, said, hey, let's declare these in-house projects and try and deliver them at a reduced cost to save the town some funds. One of the reasons why the pool has come up is it doesn't fit this kind of a model. The pool, the pool, there's no savings at the pool, in fact, it operates in the red, and we know that, and we knew that going in, I think, when the pool was created. I don't think there's a single pool that breaks even. Joe kind of looked into that, and we couldn't find one. The maintenance costs on the pool, you know, that's a big scary number, and we encountered that three years ago when, you know, there was some maintenance done on the pool prior that wasn't proper. And I, I would say that that's probably an outlier. You're not looking at spending eighty-five thousand every three years on the pool, but you are going to spend something every three to five years on the pool. The water does a number on the pool, and you're going to spend something, I'm not sure what it is, though.
Okay, yes, sir.
Didn't the council pass a tax bill back in, was it two thousand and four or eight, at one percent sales tax to be collected, part of which would go toward paying the expense of the pool?
Yeah, it, they did pass that resolution. We have a copy of that here tonight, I think Joe has it, and it was passed to defray the construction of the pool, but it was not passed to defray the operation of the pool. So the construction of the pool, we're still, still paying on. I don't know exactly when it was created, but it hasn't been paid off yet, and we're still paying for the full construction of it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hatch, I believe you have a question?
When is the construction over with, paying for, and then that one percent is still on there, would that be used for the operation of the pool?
Joe, do you know when the construction is totally defrayed?
And then you have to remove the one percent.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure. The debt on that, we've got probably fifteen-plus years to go. Mr. Smith was, was incorrect on the one part, the, and I have it in my presentation, I'll bring over the exact what the resolution, what we can pay for, but we can't pay for operating supplies or operating expenses of any of the things that we build with these funds. So there is, there is a clause in there.
So we can pay for it with, with this tax? We can pay for operating expenses?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll go through that on my presentation.
What I thought.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. So we've got about fifteen more years to go, I guess, on paying off the construction from, and that one percent goes to police, the pool, what else does that go to, Joe?
Water.
Yeah, water, sewer, police, and the pool is what that one percent goes towards.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that one percent that theoretically went to the pool, but now goes to police, water, sewer, and the pool, those were council decisions to send that money there.
Yes, sir, and I think at the time, it was written in that it would go to those purposes. I, I, I don't think it's been amended since it was originally passed. I think the police, water, and sewer and all that were already part of the package for the one percent.
Okay, thank you.
But getting back to the pool, there's going to be some maintenance associated with the pool, I'm not sure what it'll be. The annual operating cost of the pool is about a hundred-and-eighty thousand, and the accessibility of the pool is only about eight weeks a year. And the pool funds come out of this general fund source, this one percent. Yes, sir?
Oh, I've been asked repeatedly, and so it would bear repeating here so that everybody can hear it, why are we only open eight weeks per year? I get, I get tired of telling folks, so, Mr. Smith?
For that, is Chris here? Chris, do you mind speaking to the schedule for the pool?
We don't have a heater.
They have a heater. They have a heater.
It's, 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 it's closed during part of the summer months, and so folks are always asking me, so if you would.
Yes, absolutely, Mayor. It was actually decided by a team of our aquatic staff members. The revenue sources drop off significantly after the school year starts. So the operational costs and expenditures versus the revenues we were willing to bring in, that's how we determined to make it only open for eight weeks.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I get stalked all the time, and I wanted all these folks to get to hear that. We'll have, we'll be open for comments and questions here in a moment, but thank you, sir.
Yeah, there is a balance, having the lifeguards present and only having a handful of people show up, there's a balance to be struck there. But the upshot of this slide is to talk about the kinds of situations that staff sees that they want to bring to your attention. Whether or not the town of Chino Valley should operate the pool is a council decision, and it's based on what fits for Chino Valley, what fits for its community, what's best for the operation of the local government. But when staff looks at this and we see there's operational costs versus zero, a limited time span for availability versus year-round, these are the kinds of things that we look at when we're forming an opinion about what makes a good business sense.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Too many years ago to remember, I taught inner-city LA, inner-city game bangers, and we were operational in the summer. And one thing that the school district was clear to say in LA Unified is that as long as the students were involved in school, they weren't outside with nothing to do. Have we looked at the possibility of what's going to happen if we have people on the street who could have been sw... if we have people on the street who could have been swimming? Have you looked at the potential impact of that to our economy, the need for more police officers and things like that?
No, but I think you could say the same thing about the skate park. The skate park doesn't have a closed season.
Skate park's a different issue. And we're talking about something here. We frequently create things and we don't keep them up. We have a lot of roads that we've done and we haven't kept them up. That's a constant battle. I mean, you're saying once every 10 years, but there's potholes everywhere. And there are places that just are not kept up. And I take calls on that all the time. So that's, you know, that's not answering my question. We have a pool. A lot of people moved here for that pool. They plan on that pool every year. We have students expecting to be able to work here. And now, you know, you're comparing with something that doesn't exist at this point. And, you know, the reason that was voted down at that point had something else to, you know, we had another reason to do. That $19,000 could be used towards a cover on a pool. That's any recreation area. Could be used for some other recreational source. All I'm saying to you is, once you close that pool and people don't have a place to go, there are risks to this community.
And that is a factor that council has to consider because staff, we look at the numbers. We tell you how the numbers add up. And you guys have to make those qualitative decisions, not us.
You bet. And you look out, these guys could go Ferguson on us.
Before we go off the end of the line with this, this is just one thing we're looking at. We have made no decision on closing the pool. We have made no decision on any other thing. We're soliciting input. We're looking at budget. The pool may not be closed. We don't know yet. But we've got to look at our budget, and we've got to make a decision. Do we have enough money to operate? Is it healthy for the town with our budget? And do we need, we don't know if we made cuts. We don't know yet. We haven't made that decision. So that's something to do in the future, but it'll come out during this budget process.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. And what we're going to do tonight, before we take your comment, Ms. McKee, what we're going to do tonight is we're trying to look at the big picture. We're trying to find out if we can keep the pool open, right along with a lot of other facilities. There's a lot of facilities in the town that we need to address. That's why we need you guys' input. That's why we brought a lunch, so we can sit and listen to you guys after a bit. Ms. McKee?
One thing, have you considered that it is not only teenagers who use the pool, but people who have physical concerns that need the therapy of the pool, as well as people who want it for recreation?
Again, the makeup of the beneficiaries of the program. If council wants to delve into that, we're happy to try and support that. That's not what staff has looked at. We've just looked at the bottom line. Again, council has to make those qualitative decisions about what fits the community of Chino Valley. And I would say, if you've got a program out there that has a beneficiary group that's at risk, that needs attention, that's not a good cut. If you're going to cut something, and, you know, looking at the bottom here, these are kind of the rules that we look at when we're contemplating where to trim. A good cut is where you're paying a lot of money to create something. You're paying a lot of money to operate it, and you're paying a lot of money to maintain it. The source of funds is the general fund, which is beleaguered. The number of beneficiaries is low. The type of beneficiary is a not-at-risk kind of a person. The level of subsidy per benefit is very high. And I have to say, every person that walks into that pool that day, the town pays $10 for them to be there. That's something that council has to consider. And then the accessibility to the program, if you're spending a lot for it and it has a very limited time that people can enjoy it, that's an indicator for staff to say, whoa, what's going on here? How are we spending our money?
Just a moment, Mr. Smith. Before you finish out your comparison of good cuts and bad cuts, Mr. Wojcicki, you have a question?
Well, the question is that, one of the things I see in this whole presentation here this evening is that the taxpayers are being asked to make the sacrifices. No pool, less grass to be cut, more weeds here and there. Have we considered reducing the staff? I see in the chart there that we've got a public works director who's making more than anybody else, and we just recently hired him as an assistant, who makes almost as much as the average in the cities that are being considered. Is the staff making any sacrifices? Or is it all coming from the taxpayers? With expensive sewer rates, water rates that are out of sight, and very limited services. And what we do have, we're asked to get rid of, to make everything work.
That's a very good question. And I would say, let's look at the headcount graph. We're operating with a headcount that existed back in '04 and '03. Many of the programs and services that this administration provides to the public were not even in existence then. The additional programs, the additional services, the additional burden on this staff has occurred, and we have reduced our headcount. We also have kept all of our people within the pay plan that council approved that is based on work that was done by somebody not from Chino Valley. So there was no bias in looking at the job descriptions and looking at how much each person would make. We've been very responsible with our hiring practices. And the only people who are making over the average wage are people who have a quarter of a century of experience. If you look, the green lines are what we pay. The purple lines are the averages. We got a public works director and town engineer who was hired to be just the town engineer. He became the public works director when we went through the cuts. He's got 26 years of experience. You would expect him to be paid a little over average, but he is still well within plan. We have a library director who is also within the plan, but makes more than the average because he has extensive experience and has made a pretty incredible impact at the library.
And the town contributes very little to the operation of his library.
He has a very significant portion of support from volunteers.
Exactly.
And he's doing a very good job. I would say that all of our leadership is doing a very excellent job at keeping the town's operation operating and still providing all of those additional services and benefits.
I still find it ludicrous that we would be even mentioning closing a pool and at the same time hiring an assistant for the public works.
Mr. Wojcicki, wait for a second. Yes, sir.
And we can go back to this process again. First, we have to look at all the services we had, go through the chart to determine what's a good cut and a bad cut. Then I'm sure if we cut services, staff will go with it. And it's our decision at this council, not staff decision. So we're the ones that are responsible for it.
I would say, we had an engineer retire. And that engineer has been working all along on helping us produce solutions like Four South, where we saved a quarter of a million dollars. We are embarking on $6 million worth of grant work. We're embarking on $7 million worth of water work. We're embarking on several million dollars worth of roadwork and about a million and a half dollars worth of drainage work. And we need additional engineering horsepower to be able to get all the work done, if we're going to do it in-house. If council wants us to contract outside and have a firm come in here and do it, we can do that, but we will only get about half of the work done because the money will not exist. Any other questions?
Thank you. No, as I tried to explain to our audience, we're trying to get the 10,000-foot view, get an idea of what all we're up against. Mr. Smith, you did not get to finish page 19, the good cuts versus bad cuts. If you would, please finish that out. And then hopefully, we can take some input from our audience.
Sounds great. That stuff at the bottom there is just some major indicators. When we go through the budget process, if we see things that fit in one category or another, we're going to pull the numbers to those items and bring them to you. The pool came up first because there are decisions to be made about hiring lifeguards to service the pool. And those decisions happen prior to the budget process engaging. But you were right, Vice Mayor. We have several different things that we want to bring to council over the course of the budget season and have council give us guidance on whether or not we should look at running something a little differently.
Thank you. Mr. Smith hit on something. I don't know how much of our audience picked that up. The pool is on a critical path. We have to make a decision on whether to keep the pool open or to close the pool this year for this season. And we have to make a decision quickly. That's not the case with the library or the senior center or the police department or the animal shelter or any of the other programs that we, as a town, provide for our citizens. But the pool is on a critical path. That's why a week ago, we had all of our lifeguards show up here. They wanted to know if they were going to be able to train and be working this year or vandalize in our parks. Okay. The critical path is our pool. But it's not the only topic of conversation. We owe it to our citizens to look at all of the services that we provide and say, how much does this service cost? How many people does it benefit? As I talked, when I talked with our lifeguards the other night, I said, a lot of this pool stuff is quality of life, and that's going to be huge. So did you have anything more on good cuts versus bad cuts?
No, Mayor, that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to provide slides. And if anyone wants to meet with me, my door is always open. I'm happy to take folks dropping in or dropping by to ask questions. I'd love to sit down with people.
Okay. Councilwoman Hatch has something, and then we will open up for audience participation.
I want to say that I've been on this council longer than anyone else here, six years now. And every year, this pool has been a problem. I think that calling it critical at this point is kind of a... For me, it really bothers me because it's always been an issue, and we've always managed to keep it open. And I'm having a real problem with you calling it critical at this point because it's always been an issue in the budget.
Yes, ma'am. I'm right over here. And the reason that I spoke of it as critical, as I said, critical path. Critical path is huge. At what point do we hire our lifeguards on, Mr. Smith?
We have to make a decision by March 2nd to hit the timing to advertise, screen for employees, and get them trained.
Okay, so March 2nd, we have to make a decision. That's why I called it a critical path. It's huge. As you, any of you that have watched council, I remember one time, we had to have three meetings to decide whether we were going to have a meeting. And so it's real important that we begin moving forward on this so we can have some answers. Yes, sir?
I'd like to vote right here and now tonight to keep the pool open. We'll find other ways of doing it.
Point of order, you can't, we can't vote tonight.
That was nice, Mr. Wojcicki, but we're not voting tonight.
I understand, but I'm saying, it's not a question in my mind.
Right, right. Yes, sir, that's understood. But this is a study session, and we're going to hopefully take input from these folks sometime this week. Yes, ma'am?
Again, we have $300,000 in contingencies. Is that correct? It's unallocated. That's probably going to roll over into next year. And you're talking 182. I'm not saying that we shouldn't start looking at the pool, but we do have contingency funds. It's not like we're going to go under.
And I would say, staff is very happy to follow council's guidance. But we want to put the information in front of council so they can make the most possible, the most informed decisions possible.
I was trying to find the slide where it spoke about encouraging council to be somewhat conservative. Don't remember. Okay, yeah, page 15. Can you flip back to that, sir? If everybody in our audience would look at that center bar, what levels of risk are acceptable? How will you run? Basically, what we, as a council, are going to be doing is we're going to be taking a gamble. If we say we're going to keep the pool open this year, and if Governor Ducey comes in and says, we're cutting the funding to the towns, then we, as a council, are going to be scrambling. If we say, no, we're closing the pool because we want to be, you know, safe and conservative, it's going to cause a lot of difficulties for folks. A lot of folks are going to have to be driving into Prescott to use the YMCA. There's going to be a lot of, it'll change a lot of things for folks. As I spoke to our lifeguards the other night, a great deal of our pool is quality of life. It's just huge. And we're going to be listening to your input here shortly, so. Anything else from council? Yes, ma'am?
Some of these other projects that the town has that aren't as critical, crucial, or whatever, as the pool and keeping it open and other things, those could be put off for a little while. They don't have to be done as quickly. So to give these, the people, the kids, and everybody the chance to have that pool open, have the kids being lifeguards and having the whole community benefiting as it should.
You bet, you bet. And that's why I use the phrase "critical path." You're driving along on the freeway, your exit's coming up. You say, we either take this exit or we don't take this exit. And March 3rd, is it March 3rd?
Second is their preferential day.
Okay.
Can we delay that decision till March 10th, our next council meeting? And put that on the agenda?
I've asked Chris to push it that far.
Push it back to the next council meeting, have it on the agenda. That we can, at that time, we can vote one way or another.
Because we have some hiring limitations, March 10th doesn't work. So working with Robert's direction here, we are going to start advertising the positions. Those advertisements will go out next week. We don't have to conclude the advertisement process. We don't have to conclude the interview process. There's a number of different things that we can do, but we have to start the process on Monday.
Will March 10th work for you if you have to hire for the pool?
Yes, it will. But we will be advertising March 7th.
I'm going to ask that we put this on the March 10th agenda.
I believe it's already on the March 10th agenda, is it not? But tonight, this study session, we want the input from our citizens. And we will deal with all of the other many services that we provide with the town of Chino, places where we can cut, places where we can't cut. We'll wrestle through that. But we need our citizens' input.
I just want the council to know, we are advertising the positions for the pool, starting on Monday.
You're just going to advertise the positions? If we vote to close the pool, then that's that. Everybody will know that going in.
And even once the advertisements close and we do the interview process, we don't have to hire. I mean, there's a number of different times that we can conclude this process, but we need to start it on Monday.
You bet. And thank you for starting that process so our feet are moving when we hit the ground. Thank you. I'm going to start taking input from our audience tonight. Yes, ma'am, the lady in the white, second row back. And then the lady in the blue will be the next one. You're the one. Please hurry up. I'm going to ask you folks, please come up.
You need to come up here, Donna.
I'm going to ask you folks to please keep it to three minutes. We've got a lot of folks here that want to speak. There's a little card there that says, please give us your name. And then let us hear your thoughts.
My name is Donna Armstrong. I live on Mojave in Chino. Two things that came up tonight. One was the thing that Linda Hatch questioned about how many people, from 16 to 69 or whatever it was. Please remember that a lot of those people in Chino Valley are disabled. I'm working with ARP taxes. I see it multiple times every day. There's a huge amount of people that are disabled. So they're not on a workable. They can't go out and work. When it comes to the pool, I also want you to remember that there is a number of those children that go to the pool. Their parents work. And we will be putting a real problem in that's, they've worked up a system of, the pool is not the babysitter, but in kind of it, it is. And where are you going to put those kids And where are you going to put those kids when there's no place for the mothers to take their kids? Because there is no place for the mothers to take their kids in Chino Valley.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Hello there. My name is Sherri Brown, and I live here in Chino Valley. I want to commend all these young people for being in this meeting. I think it's wonderful to see them all, and have them assist us. I would like to say that I consider the pool in Chino Valley a real gem in our community, and to have it closed, I think, is a horrible idea. Eight weeks isn't even enough time. School is out, and people can start using the pool in June, July, and almost all of August before school starts. So, I think if anything, it should be extended, and maybe even weekends in September, while the weather's still hot, and we have some young people who probably don't go off to college and work weekends. The other thing I want to say is, I've heard a lot about cuts, but I haven't heard anything about trying to find ways to improve the money that comes into our town. And with all you good thinkers, I would think that you would be able to come up with some ideas. We've got a facility over there by the pool that's basically vacant. There should be a number of ideas that could help the revenue in the town that could be made using that facility, and other things, like in the summer, there could be maybe weekend or even monthly activities that might be picnics and booths, and things where people might provide some money to offset some of the, specifically the pool, but maybe some other things. And I think we need some other ideas about how to improve the finances coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are moving forward on trying to raise revenues. Yes, ma'am, young lady in the blue and white shirt.
Hello. I'm Ricky Rodriguez, and I live off of 5 North. I just have a quick question for the council. If we close the pool, you guys said there's about 15 years of construction still to pay off. If we do close the pool, will we continue to pay off the construction for the next 15 years? Yes.
I would imagine. So, Mr. Smith, let me, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've, we have only been considering cover the pool for one or two years. It's a fairly large chunk of money to hopefully get us back on our feet again. It's not the idea of closing the pool and making a feral cat shelter out of it, okay? We're just talking about one or two years. If we went more than two years closed, we would suffer a lot of deterioration in the gunight, correct?
Yes, sir. What we were looking at is, can we take care of the pool, keep the water quality where it needs to be, and just not run the swimming program? And if that would save us about 180 a year, maybe you do a year and see where you stand. And, you know, if you're able to recover well enough and move forward, you move forward. If not, you know, but yes, sir. If you were going to shutter the pool for more than a year or two, you would want to do a more permanent mothball that would preserve it better.
Okay. We can't just pump the water out, because the sides will blow in.
But that cost is not going anywhere. I mean, it's staying. Whether it closes or it opens, that's going to be there, so.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Lady in the back there, yes, please. And hang tight. I'm going to try and get to all of you. You were wanting to speak too, right? In the tie, yes, sir. I thought so. You indicated that earlier. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Lori Heiner. I teach at the high school, and I live off of 2 South. There's many things about why we should keep the pool open. Number one, there's going to be money spent maintaining the pool, whether we open it or not. The funds that are brought in from the community typically pay for our lifeguard's wages. So, if we close the pool, we're still going to be out a certain amount of money. Yes, money is going to, more money is going to be needed for electricity, for chemicals, while it's being in use. But the fact that the lifeguard's wages come from entrance fees, swim lesson fees, aquatic fitness fees, all of that, there will be, if you close the pool, there will be an increase in vandalism. Being a teacher, working with these children, there will be an increase in vandalism. There will be an increase on our police force, having to take care of other issues. Also, keep Chino money in Chino. I am tired of everybody going to Prescott Valley and Prescott to spend money. We need to keep Chino money in Chino. We need to bring Prescott's money to Chino, and Prescott Valley, their money. And we do do that with the pool. There are many people who do not live in Chino Valley that come to our pool because it's such a beautiful, well-maintained, friendly, customer-service facility. So, if we want to keep money in Chino, we need to keep the pool open.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. In the red, pink, whatever. Front row.
Hi, I'm Kelly Rayliss. I live off of 2 South, and I have been a lifeguard for four years. And this last year, I was one of the managers at the Aquatic Center. And last week, we met with Mayor Marley and a couple of the other council members, and he gave us the task of deciding how we can help support the pool and the community, how we can reach out to the community to help. Well, this past week, all of us lifeguards, we reached out to the community and, we made petitions, and had members of the community sign it, and we totaled it up, and it's about 295 signatures in support of keeping the pool open. And that's just in a week's time. The Chino Valley Aquatic Center, it's used by a wide variety of the population. It includes children, families, teenagers, and retirees. It, the services the pool provides are cardio exercise, which can be difficult for, as Councilmember McKee was saying, with disabled, or not disabled veterans. Well, there's disabled veterans, but most of our population is retired or disabled. And I'm currently in the nursing program. I'll be in RN in a couple of months. And I've seen in the hospital setting how rheumatoid arthritis, fibromyalgia, chronic diseases like that put strain on the joints. The pool, it's less hard on the joints and the body, which makes it easier for people that have difficulty with mobility and range of motion. It helps them maintain their independence and their functions of life. So, as you were saying, Mayor Marley, the pool is about quality of life. I know from being in the hospital, most people would have a greater quality of life than a greater quantity of life. And as Lori Heiner was saying, the teenagers, if they don't have a pool to go to, they're going to vandalize. It's just a matter of fact. That's what teenagers do. But the pool doesn't just serve teenagers to keep them out of trouble. We have the junior lifeguard program, which helps them learn leadership roles, how to handle emergency situations. They become, they know CPR, which can help if somebody were to collapse of cardiac arrest in the hos, or in Safeway, and there's nobody around but that teenager that was in the junior guard program. That helps benefit our community. And the same with the disabled people in the community with the thing, or with the thing, with, sorry, I'm nervous. With working out and doing aquafit and lap swim and everything, it helps pervert, or helps better our community by creating a healthier community. There's less calls for medications, health insurance costs. It helps lower the cost overall in the whole community. Also, we have a lot of families that come. Think back to when you guys were children. You spent a lot of time with your families. You spent a lot of time with your siblings outside. We don't see that that much anymore. We have kids that go to the park, but mostly these teenagers, and I know my brother's age in the elementary school age, they love those video games. The pool gives them time to go outside, get fresh air, learn what it's like to be a kid. I've noticed a big difference when I was a kid to my brother's generation right now. They are more couch potatoes, and you're seeing it. There's juvenile diabetes, obesity. Think of the future of how the children, if there's no pool over the summer, they're going to stay inside. Think of all the chronic health problems that's going to affect Chino Valley. And other families that want to go swimming, they'll take it to the Y, like Lori said. All that revenue that we could be having is going to go to Prescott, in Prescott Valley, Phoenix even, with the water parks. So, I think, yeah, it might cost the town money, but overall, it's going to benefit the future generations and our current generation, both health-wise, personality-wise. I think it's a good idea to keep it open.
Okay. Thank you. Before I take any of the others from the audience, one of our lifeguards spoke about kids and drowning. Which one of you folks was, you're not here tonight? Okay, great. All right. I remember one of you had spoken about the training the kids, teaching the kids to swim, and how it prevents drowning. Okay, hands. Yes, sir.
My name's Robert McCauley, mayor council. I live in Chino Valley. I'm going to deviate from the pool just a hair. On the bad cuts that Robert had up there, he had grants and restricted things. Each grant that we apply for, we have to have a match. So, if you apply for a $2 million grant that requires a 10% match, that would have covered keeping the pool open. Yeah, the grant might do you some good, but it's a new project. It's eventually going to cost us some more money. If the grant's a 20% match, that's $400,000, and it goes right on up. So, you know, sometimes a grant is not a good thing. Not always is it a good thing. Sometimes it is a good thing, but you have to balance it out. One other thing, the thing about the people, 16 to 64, that's almost the exact same chart that was in the newspaper the other day, from when Robert did his presentation at the chamber. The interesting thing on that, that information was from 2008 to 2012. Things have changed drastically since that timeframe. Just out of curiosity, when I saw it in the paper, I went online and checked out the demographics. Populations are right. A lot of things are right. The unemployment rate in this area, and I would imagine it probably takes in the Quad Cities, is only 4.6%, which is below the state average, below national average. It's not taking into consideration the people that don't want to work. You know, there's a lot of those out there, including me. I'm retired, and I appreciate that. And some of you are retired, too. You don't want to work, but if you're counted in that age group, then your statistics saying you're not working. And so, we have to be careful with statistics. Statistics are misleading. Numbers you can add. Statistics can be used. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just to briefly piggyback on Mr. McCauley's statements, many of the grants that we do have are matching. Do we receive any grants that have been without matching funds? The one for the skate park, any of the others?
Mayor, all of the grants that we have created for the town since I've been here have had other grants to create the match, so that we don't have to come up with money out of our pocket for those grants.
Okay. And also, I'd heard the other day, 87% of all statistics are made up on the spot. Yes, sir, in the checkered shirt here.
I'm Jed Jacobson. I live on Road 5 here in Chino. I just had a quick question for Mr. Smith. I was curious how much the animal shelter costs to keep open every year?
Mayor, if you, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but our animal shelter, just like our library, relies on a lot of volunteer and donation, donated materials. And I don't think the chief's here, he probably has that number in his head, but if we were to close the animal shelter and operate it under a contract, I know that they looked at that before I got here, and it was more expensive to go with a contract and have somebody else do it, because there were no volunteers or donated materials involved in that process. But again, the animal shelter isn't escaping the table. Everything that we're doing is on the table. We're looking at all of it to try and make the best recommendations we can to council, so they have the information they need to make the right decisions for Chino.
Okay. I just want to voice my opinion real quick. I think that there's a much bigger draw to Chino Valley if it has a pool than if it has an animal shelter. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. There was a lady back there. Yeah, if you would. And then the lady in the pink will be next. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Karen, and this is my son Eric. We live in Paulden. The outskirts closer to Chino, so we're kind of like Chino or Paul, whoever knows. But the pool is very important. I have some suggestions on what to do. I mean, I go to the college, and I pay $25 a month, so I can go five days a week or whatever. So, why not do something like that? I'm willing to pay even $50 a month to stay in Chino Valley. And my mother goes, and there's other people who go swimming in Prescott, who are waiting for Chino Valley pool to open. Because, I mean, just saving the commute. And then I understand there's also a lot of people who go to YMCA. So, consider doing that. I mean, if I pay $50 for me for one, and my son $50, then you have customers. They paid, you know. And he wants to do the junior lifeguard, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. He does swimming. I mean, it helps kids boost up their ego, and it gives them something to do. You know, and like other people said, you would end up with too many kids out in the road with nothing to do, and then you start talking about vandalism, drugs, whatever. So, I just think there are ways to make money. I know the lifeguards that I've talked to, they're willing to do some things, and I'm willing for you guys to increase the fees. You know, think of stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The lifeguards did discuss selling one of the mayor's kidneys on Craigslist to raise money, but...
We tried his heart, but he doesn't have any.
Excuse me, sir. This young lady here is next, and then you.
My name is Edie Spain, and I live in Chino Valley. And I too want to thank the youth of Chino Valley for being here. It's amazing. You're wonderful. And I have a feeling that those of you who are here, if the pool closes, and it won't, I don't think, you're not going to be doing the vandalizing. I can just kind of tell. I have a quick question for Mr. Smith. I was struck by the salaries in your chart. I've, I lived in Los Angeles for 29 years, and it's a very high cost of living in Los Angeles, incredibly high cost of living. The salaries that some of the employees in Chino Valley are making would support them in Los Angeles. So, I'm just kind of wondering if any studies have been done regarding the Chino Valley cost of living, what they need to live here, and their salaries. I just wonder if there's kind of a, if there's any information that we could get about that. And as far as 25 years of experience, in some cases, salaries have to freeze, and in some cases, because, for example, of a low cost of living, like here in Chino Valley, salaries are not based on experience. And those are kind of just questions that I'd like to see investigated if possible, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you would, I just got a quick note on that, a comparison between cost of living and salaries. And once again, let's stay with towns our size, so we've got apples to apples. This young fellow here was next, and then the lady in the USA shirt. Okay. And then there's another one in the back. Yes, sir?
Hello. My name is Sterling Heiner, and I live off of 2 North. I've been a lifeguard at the Chino Pool for four years, and manager for one year. Really quick, I'd just like to mention, to keep this in mind, that when it comes to the pool and the usage of it, we have a vast variety of people who come to use this pool. It's not just the youth. It's not just the elderly. It's not just, you know, the little kids. It's a combination of everyone who lives in this community utilizes this pool for different aspects of aquafit, swim lessons, open rack swim. The youth, we have adults. We have moms, dads, uncles, aunts. We have the senior citizens. We have the disabled. We have families. I mean, if the pool doesn't open this summer, what are these families going to do? When they have, when they need to find something to do for the kids? I'd also like to talk about how, if the pool were to close, the overall aspect of Chino Valley, I feel like, how appealing it is to people who are moving and relocating and everything, I feel like it would lessen, I feel like it would impact the families who are looking to move. When they're looking at this tri-city area, you know, they look at what's within each town, and they see the Chino Valley... each town, and they see the Chino Valley, the town of Chino Valley, and they don't see an aquatic center, or they see that it just closed down, they might be less likely to move here. So, you know, if we want to encourage families to move into the town of Chino Valley, yet we're trying to cut down the pool, you know, what good, what good does that do? What, what other incentives do we have for these families, who have three-year-olds, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, who need stuff to do? You know, if we don't have that, what incentives do we have for these people? And they'll be more likely to move to places like Prescott or Prescott Valley, and we'll lose their service, and we'll lose their, their funding and their taxes. And I know Mayor Marley, last week you talked about how, you know, we need to focus on the youth and keep them here, and wind them, or, you know, convincing them that it's a good idea to live here, and to have the race families in here, and live our lives in the town of Chino Valley. I can speak on my own behalf, you know, if things like the pool close, there's not much here for us to stay here, and I will go and I will move out, and I'll move to a different area that has more things to provide for the people. I mean, if the pool closes, that's just one less incentive to keep, you know, the youth that are around my age, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, from staying here and actually living here, and, you know, putting down their roots in this town, there's not much to give back to them. I mean, and you're looking at, I don't know how many staff from the Chino Valley Pool that are willing to do whatever it takes to raise money to keep the pool open. I mean, we have a list of different ideas and fundraisers that we'd like to do to help raise money for the pool. I mean, you're looking at twenty to twenty-five youth of the town of Chino Valley that are willing to help you guys raise money for this town, to help lower that, that deficit that, that happens every year from the pool. So, I mean, with twenty to twenty-five, you know, working hands of the youth, you can get a lot done. So, I want that to keep, be kept in mind, that we can, the youth has such a huge contributing factor to getting stuff done, and actually getting the word out, and getting money raised for the pool. So, I think, keep that in mind.
Thank you. Before, if you guys would, please put your hands down for just a second, I wanted to ask Mr. Bartels, if you would come up. I was going to ask Mr. Bartels, if we do an extended season, do you have any idea what the losses are, the daily losses, or is that, I, I, I'm asking this one on the fly?
Maybe I'll add some numbers for you. Eighty-seven percent of statistics are just pulled out of, out of, out of thin air, right? Normal operating costs per day are somewhere around the $2,000 to $2,500 a day to operate the pool. The offset in costs for revenue they're going to get is significantly outweighed by those numbers. So, trying to extend that season, when we actually have people going back to school, the attendance drops off so significantly, it would be hard to offset those expenditures.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I just, I needed that number, two thousand and eight to run the pool.
The $25,000 to $30,000 mark would be pretty close for the operation, extra a month for that, for the Quad Facility.
Okay, cool, thank you. Alright, this fellow with the white hair in the back there, and then there's a lady to the right with a blue shirt, we're going to get next. Ah, the USA lady, I'm sorry, he's already up, I'll bring you up. You got two minutes, okay, no. Yes, sir?
My name's John Preston, I live on Two, One East. When we, when the town bought Old Home Manor from Billy Wells, it was a time when the state was put, putting through critical groundwater law. And the town was afraid they wouldn't have water someday, so they bought the Old Home Manor, because they had a lot of wells that would ensure water for this place. The other major selling point was, they got all that land, they're going to make an industrial park, that was going to line the coffers of the community. Where are they?
Good point, thank you. As you're coming up, when I first got into office, I saw an artist's rendition of what Old Home Manor was going to be like, and it, it's stuck in somebody's office, sort of a sad thing. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Lori Marley, I'm a teacher at Del Rio Elementary, no relation to Mayor Marley. Mr. Smith, I have a question for you as well. On your chart with the sixteen to sixty-two, or sixty-four-year-olds, whatever, when you say however much percentage works five days a week, are you including teachers in that? Or fifty-two, or however many weeks a year? We do not work fifty-two weeks a year, but we do work full-time. Also, when you are considering cutting things, I've worked for the school district, this school district, for 23 years, I make $40,000. So perhaps the town managers or town higher-up people could take a cut to pay for the pool. I'm not finished.
Oh, no? Okay, cool.
I also wanted to thank Sterling and all his friends here for coming in, and I work with elementary students who need the pool, or like the other lady said, they will be home alone, and doing who knows what, will need more police as well. And I also read your article in the paper, Mayor, and I don't appreciate being called part of a lynch mob.
Wow, okay.
And I don't think you should be calling these young people the vandals, because I don't think they are.
I didn't call them vandals, but...
You said they would be part of the, you said they would be part of the people who are doing vandalism. I'm sure you're joking, however, it's not appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Alright, yes, ma'am?
Hello, Mayor and Council, my name is Karen Willie, and I live off of Five North. And I hadn't planned on being here tonight. I'm here because my son made me come here tonight. I have a soon-to-be twelve-year-old, young man who had prior commitments tonight, and he made me come to this meeting, because the pool is so important to him, because he knows that it helps keep him healthy during the summer, and gives him something to do other than video games and TV. And he also knows that it's someplace for him and mom to go, because mom has a lot of health problems, that's me. I can't do a lot of things with him, I can't, you know, go for bike rides and hikes, and, you know, a lot of the fun things that kids like to do. I can go swim, because it's, it's easy on my body, easy on my joints, and I can, you know, during the summer, work on getting myself, you know, a little bit healthier. I guess my question would be, you know, I know the pool has been, you know, playing around with some different ways of charging people the entrance fees for the pools and whatnot. I'd be interested to find out what the income was in past years compared to last year, when they split the day up into two swim times, where you had to, you know, pay two times to come in. I found that quite hard as a parent, to do that, because financially, it was a hardship on us, and we weren't able to go as much. And I felt that when we were there swimming, I didn't see the numbers of, of kids there that are usually there, and I, I think that impacted a lot of the people financially, the way that, that they had set up the, the entrance fees last year, or the, and the swim times, the way they broke that up. I did enjoy the nighttime swimming, I just want to make that point known, that was very enjoyable. I think that the impact of closing the pool, that would be on the community, would be very high, and we're talking an impact of everything from, you know, what these wonderful young adults here have, have said, they've made a lot of good points about health, and, and the money that would be spent in Prescott or Prescott Valley, because, you know, that's where we'd end up having to go if we had the money. I don't have the money to drive into Prescott every day, so, but the people that do, they're going to go spend their money in Prescott, they're going to stop at the store in Prescott, they're not going to stop at the store here, they're going to run over to Walmart, or, you know, whatever, and they're going to be getting the sales tax benefits from, from the, the people spending there. So, not to mention the environmental impact, more people driving back and forth, using more fuel, expending more pollution, and, I mean, we're talking little things, but it all has, you know, an impact. One thing that, that I'd like to, to, to see is trying to find a way to bring more income into the pool. These young people have mentioned that they're willing to help, and I applaud them, that's wonderful. You know, there's, the library has a lot of programs, and donations, and volunteers, and, and things of that nature. You know, why are we not looking at those types of things, of bringing in extra income for the pool? Why does it have to come out of the general fund? Why cannot, why can we not be looking at other ways to fund the pool that would help offset those costs, and help us to maybe extend the, the, the pool season? Also, as far as extending it into the school year, instead of having it open all day, where you're paying for the lifeguards all day, maybe just, you know, afternoon or evening swims, like, you know, when the schools are, you know, when they get off of school. It's, there are ideas to play with, but I, I'd be interested in the numbers as to what, you know, the revenue of the, the pool was prior to last year, and what it was, you know, last year, comparatively to how you guys broke up the, the, the swim times. And also, I think the snack bar would make more money if you had an all-afternoon swim time instead of a break, because they're staying there longer, they're hungry, they're going to want to eat, so, you know, maybe making a little extra money on the snack bar, maybe, you know, that type of thing, you know, I don't, I'm just kind of throwing out ideas, but, you know, we have the youth, we have the community, you know, let's put together a committee, and, and try to find some ways to, to offset the cost of the pool, maybe bring in more revenue for the pool to make it more beneficial. A friend of mine mentioned, why was this pool not made an indoor pool to begin with, year-round? I mean, that could have, you know, been a very, a very good possible revenue for, for the city, creating jobs, you know, bringing in, you know, certain revenues, having different programs. A friend of mine mentioned, you know, the high school could have a swim team, you know, different things. I mean, you know, something to think about for the future even, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Before, before I call on our next one, it was called, brought to my attention, I may have offended some of you folks, I hope I didn't offend you young folks, we, we got to visit for quite a while, so that gave me a lot of opportunity to offend you. This young fellow along the wall, yes, sir? Yes, ma'am? If you would, you'll do, yes, sir?
I was just wondering, what is the fee structure for using the pool? I mean, do we charge $10 a day per person, or what?
Is Mr. Bartel still with us? Could you shout it out, and then I'll repeat it for, for the tape? The fee structure?
It averages about $2.50 per swim session, it averages. It's on the low end of like a dollar fifty for kids under three, I believe it is, and up to, two dollars, or three dollars for adult, adult only.
Okay, it averages about $2.50 per session, okay. And this young fellow's next?
I wanted to tell you that the fee for the adult swim is, I think, $45, and a figure two or three week session, two or three times a week, I don't know how you...
Oh, okay, so we do have some extended programs, excellent. Yes, sir?
My name is Mark, and I live on Road One South, we just moved here about ten weeks ago, and one of the major draw, well, not a major draw, but one of the benefits of moving here was the aquatics and the pool, and we were actually looking forward as a family to be using it. One of the things that I, everybody's talking about, but I don't think has been addressed, is really trying to find out what, how much is actually really going to be saved this year? Do we know if you're going to be keeping the director for the aquatics there, will, and what's his salary, if he's going to be kept there? Has anybody looked at actually breaking down and say, okay, we still have to pay so much, because we have construction costs that we still have to occur, we still have to keep all the chemicals in the pool? How many employees are we going to still be keeping up, electricity and things like that? So if we cut, cut the pool out, has anybody actually sat down with the numbers? Because I don't know how much the director makes, because it wasn't on the chart, and is he going to still have a job? And is he making 50, $60,000 a year? You know, I'm just throwing out numbers, I don't know, but the council should really look in, before they make this decision, and analyze and find out, okay, this is how much we're actually going to save if we actually do close down the pool, because you might be surprised by the time you add up all, because there still will be maintenance, I don't care if somebody's swimming in it or not swimming in it, there's still going to be maintenance costs with that. The insurance, it's still a liability insurance that goes across the city, which you'll have to pay, no matter if there's somebody in the pool and there's not in the pool. So I would really like to have the, the council really sit down and, and talk with Mr. Smith, and find out a, a drop-dead number on how much will actually be, that, that the council will be able to save by cutting out the pool. And if it's something where you have 25 or 30 young adults that really want to make a difference, you can't put a price tag on that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the young lady in the orange, and then we'll get the one in the back there with the striped shirt, yes, ma'am? Or orange, pink, whatever.
It's a good, no worries. I am Lori Gonzalez, and I live on Terry Lane, and I have a question for you, and also a statement, but first I want to ask the question, is, in the first slide that you showed us, there was a steady incline on the budget, and then now it's kind of slowly declining, but it is declining, how is that so?
Mr. Smith?
The, the, the reason why is the water system is still requiring money from the general fund in order to operate, it, it doesn't break even. There simply aren't enough customers in the water system for it to break even. And we've been adding resources to the town's finances, we refinanced some things, we got the wastewater treatment plant under our control, but we have not yet added the additional customers that are necessary to turn the financial line back around.
And then, my statement that I wanted to say is, I know you guys are only talking about vandalism that kids will be doing if we close the pool, but it's not just vandalism, it's also, I know there was this group of kids who like, partied pretty often, that actually came to the pool on the night swims and played football, like, they tossed around of footballs instead of going out and partying, so it's not, people, you, by opening the pool, you'll stop kids from alcohol, drugs, vandalism, it's not just vandalism, it's a lot of other aspects.
Thank you, thank you. This young lady in the stripes, and then I believe the lady there, yeah, you'll be next. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Ciara Muncie, and I live in this beautiful place we call Chino Valley. And I'm 13. I know that there's a lot of kids my age with social anxiety, we're stressed out all the time, and swimming and doing stuff like that relieves stress, and we meet people at the pool, and we introduce ourselves, and it, it relieves social anxiety and things like that. And considering that, like, when, for the future of Chino Valley, when people have social anxiety, when they're 16, 17, they're not going to want to go out and make job interviews, and they're gonna, not going to want to take that. So that's going to hurt our economy even more. So I think that we should keep the pool open, because it makes it easier for us to get rid of our stress levels and our social anxiety, just by swimming and meeting people, and I think it would hurt us to close it.
Cool, thank you. I know some of you, your hands have gone up 30 times, I'm trying to get you all, yes, ma'am?
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Kathleen Finlayson, I've been involved in recreation for over 35 years. Much like a lot of these guys, junior lifeguards, I chose officiating sports and coaching. However, I did, I've worked in all three communities in recreation, I've worked in the Prescott Valley Recreation Department, in their pool, I managed it, ran it, worked in the city of Prescott, looked at some of these numbers, like we said, statistics can be skewed, managing and creating budgets. I would be happy to work with you and come up with some solutions. To me, coming to Chino Valley, it's not just about a pool for me. Recreation is not just a quality of life, it is life. We, we don't, we work to live. We are at work, what, eight hours a day? We sleep eight hours a day. The rest of our life, we need to go ahead and play. Recreation, we have to travel on roads, we need public works. I need, I would like to travel on a paved road. I want to play wherever I want to play. I like to hike, I like to bike, okay? I don't like to swim, but other people like to swim. I don't like bathing suits. But the bottom line is, we need to look at... But the bottom line is, we need to look at the entire picture. We have to decide, how are we gonna go ahead and reach social equity in Chino Valley? What are we doing to reach our citizens in Chino Valley? I love Chino Valley, I'm staying here for a reason, because I love this community, I truly do. I've coached at the high school, I've coached, you know, varsity sports, I'm a current 7th grade teacher. I love the attitude, I just totally dig it. So when we talk about this, it's not you making the decision, it's us making the decision, okay? We make the decision, we're telling you, this is what we wanna do. We understand that budget cuts need to be made, we totally get that. The other problem is, when you look at this community and salaries, I made more money working in government than I do teaching. And that's a shame because there is a direct correlation between kids getting an education and criminal behavior, if you will, not vandalism, okay? And recreation and criminal behavior. So both of these together, there's a direct correlation. However, we decide, government says, recreation's important, so we're gonna go ahead and pay our, our, our recreationists. Teachers, teaching's important, but you know what? We don't need to pay them that much because they enjoy it and they live it. Well, I live both. I would like to get paid both too, I would like to get paid what they get for recreation again. It's not that way. So we do make life choices, we do make decisions, but based upon those decisions, we have to decide, if we build it, are we going to maintain it? I was also a part of the recreational foundation who helped build this pool. And it angers me that we are not going out to the community and saying, we, you wanted it, we built it. And now we're saying, oh, you know, but we need to make some budget cuts. We worked years tirelessly to get this pool. And I know I'm not just speaking about myself. I worked with Lon Turner, we worked very well together on that, okay? So we had a BMX track. People left, nobody wanted to maintain it. We had a rodeo arena. People left, nobody wanted to maintain it. So we have to decide, if we're going to build something, are we going to maintain it? Now, a skate park has maintenance, there is no $0 in maintenance. You can ask Idia Prescott, they'll tell you right now. You have to maintain anything you build, I don't care what it is, zero is not a maintenance cost. And that is ridiculous and I can't believe it was put up there. However, I can see speculatively, you would like it to be zero, I understand that. But we really need to decide as a council, as a community, if we would want to attract people and attract business and create a community so where we can get that revenue in there, then by gum, let's go ahead and get something to where we can attract them. We have people who came here for an aquatic facility, they said, wow, that's gonna be great, we can swim, we're gonna take that away, now what are we gonna do? We have Safeway. You know? Okay, we have facilities, we can rent them out, but we need people to go out there and solicit. We need to get out there and say, hey, I've got this facility, come on out here, it's beautiful. Okay, we're so, like they said, we're stretched thin, I heard him, I've been here, I know it. Everybody is, do more with less, do more with less, and I get that, we're all stretched thin. But if you want people, you're not gonna hire a general contractor to build a sewage treatment plant. You're gonna hire an engineer, right? Cause he knows what he's doing. Okay? Hopefully, you're hiring a recreation professional to go ahead and tell you what they need to do to get that stuff done. But more times than not, people say, oh, it's just quality of life, it doesn't matter. Well, you know what, it does matter, okay? Because I do live it and I do play it and I have a degree in it and teaching and criminal justice. And they all go like this, okay? So I'm not just preaching, I live it, that's what I'm trying to tell you. So you have to decide what you wanna do and I will leave my name with the clerk so that we can go ahead and have conversations. I will call each and every one of you because I am that passionate about recreation in this community and having something to do and maintaining it. And I think that is what you need to decide, it's not keeping it, it's maintaining it. Thank you.
The, before, before anybody else comes up, I used the phrase quality of life with our young folks the other evening. And I, I've heard it, several folks bring it up this evening. What I was trying to explain to them is, is, I guess, it's probably a poor analogy, but it's the only one that I had. I said, I bring home flowers to my bride, not because they're good eating, not because I like flowers, but it's a quality of life issue. If I am going to water something, I usually wanna harvest it and, and cook it. But when it comes down to it, you can't do everything on a practical basis. You have to have some quality of life issues. And you can't have all quality of life issues and have nothing practical. And so when I was talking with the, with our lifeguards the other evening, I was trying to use that analogy to them. When we look at the pool, it, it is, it's something that, that enhances our quality of life. Okay, the next 23 hands. You've been up for some time in the purple shirt and then in the back there will be next.
Hi, my name's Travis and I live on Road One North. And my statements for the Mayor, Mr. Marley. Mr. Marley, I'm the student body president of my high school, so I kinda live a similar position, albeit smaller to what you do. Not quite as important, obviously. But you would agree with me that the purpose of being elected is to like, you know, serve the people. Do as they like ask you. We live in a very vocal community, you'd agree with that too, right? Like, you've seen the propositions, I've seen the signs plastered all over this town for Prop 401, the school bond, all the other things you guys have. And people are, they take sides, yes, no, yes, no. I have yet to see a single person say, we should shut the pool down, other than the council. So, I mean, in terms of giving the people what they want, like, I don't, quite frankly, sir, I don't see why this is even a matter of discussion. I think the pool just needs to be open. No further statements.
Thank you. Before you, before you get that, I wanted to thank Travis for what he said. I've, I've never heard Chino referred to as a somewhat vocal town. But I, in fact, have had quite a few folks tell me, why do we have a pool? But that's why we're doing this tonight, yes, ma'am?
I think she was first.
Okay, you're.
You have not heard all of the council say, close the pool.
I would add to that, you haven't heard any of the council say, we are going to close the pool. We've simply discussed it, yes, ma'am?
You know, I have a question for Mr. Smith that comes to mind right now. On your headcount, your operational performance, how many of these communities that you're comparing with included sewer workers in the headcount? I mean, were you comparing jobs to jobs or were you just taking number of citizens per employee?
I believe the population figures and the employment figures were taken straight from the survey.
And so you didn't classify which towns had certain services and others did not?
That data is not available.
Oh, it might be.
It's not in the, in the league.
So it might not be a represent, representative comparison if that information is not available.
Well, I would say that the, the town sewer workers are already on board, we have not added headcount to take on the sewer plant. And, and we in fact are, are adding more burdens to the existing staff, taking that on.
Okay, thank you.
The point is, Mr. Smith, you're not comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges.
Young fellow, no, this one, okay, you're next.
Hi, my name is Joe Rollins and I live off of Road One South. I would like to see before March 10, perhaps an economic study that actually looked at real savings by closing the pool. Looking at 180,000 operating expenses, but you're still talking about, without giving us numbers, how much, how much expenses are still gonna be given for maintenance as well as even a modest estimate on vandalism, police work, something like that, so we can get a true savings number. And then look at it the right way of how to do a better fee structure for the pool to offset some of that. I know people have said that splitting it up, two different fees, you know, two, twice a day decreases the amount of times you use the pool. And I would be happy to pay 50 cents more to get in a day. And if you're losing $10 per person, then it's 180,000 operating loss, 50 cents saves you $9,000 over the course. What about, I'd be happy to pay $5 more for my son to take a swim lesson. You know, up, maximize your income and look at the real savings, not, not 180,000, and then vote on that. Vote on a change in the fee structure. I would be happy to see that.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Marley?
I wanted to make sure I encapsulated that he, he spoke about the, the bottom line costs of keeping the pool open versus closed. Because we do have a certain amount of maintenance, even, even if it's mothballed. And then he spoke about the fee structure. Did I, those were the two major points, sir?
Yes, the, the, the true, the true operating savings, even accounting for a modest increase in vandalism and other, there's other intangibles here.
Right.
As well as just an optimal fee structure, instead of one that is more rating.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I was writing as fast as I could to operating costs. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I, I would like to meet with you if you have a few moments. We did a, a financial analysis on the pool. And when, when I first got here, we were losing between 240 and 250,000 a year at the pool. That's bottom line loss after operations and revenues were accounted for. The changes that the employees have made to the operation of the pool have narrowed that loss to 180,000. The 180,000 is the net operating loss after you pay all the bills and you get all the revenue. And that's the reason why we brought this forward. That 180,000 is the figure that was used in the computation of every swimmer that hits the pool, we're paying $10. So we have looked at that pro forma, we have not tried to price out the intangibles, we haven't looked at that. So we don't know what you might ascribe to costs for vandalism if all the swimmers decided to go out and do graffiti or whatever. But we did look at the business operation. We have narrowed the losses, but we have not been able to control them beyond the 180,000.
I'd assume you had narrowed losses already and cut costs as much as possible. Intangible should be as best as possible, some of them aren't intangible, some of them are maintenance costs and storing costs and that sort of thing. As well as, I mean, the fee structure is not, as you could say, if it really is $10 a person loss, which is a lot, we boost it up. I mean, you're talking about a 5% increase in price, 5% loss and, and operating loss, right? 50 cents drops it $9,000, is that accurate?
Oh, yes, Mr. Rollins? Yeah, once you get away from the mic, it, it, we sort of lose that, but, oh, thank you. I, I tried to encapsulate as much of it as I could. Please visit with Mr. Smith if you would. We, we, I believe we can come up with some idea of vandalism costs. I know we have a fair amount of vandalism or have had. I remember when I first got into office, we had a, a fair amount of it. But at least we can have some, an estimate anyway. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Jeff Stewart, I'm with Chino Valley Fire District, one of the firefighters. I also live in Paulding area and I'm also a Red Cross certified instructor, lifeguarding, and I do that here for the town. I realize that bottom line is dollars, that's always what it is, you know, it's gonna cost too much to do this, that or the other thing. But I would like you guys also to consider what the pool brings as far as education to the youngsters in the community. I know each and every one of these students and I've known them for a number of years. I'm not gonna say they were immature when I met them, but obviously at this age, you're, you're learning, you're developing. And some of the skills that are taught to 11 and 12 and 13 year olds are life-saving skills. We're talking about CPR, AED, first aid. These aren't easy things to learn and they're, they're not easy things to take with you and continue in your, in your life practices. You know, some of them move on to nursing, some of them move on to other pools. I don't know if you're aware of how many of our lifeguards are taking their skills to another pool because, you know, ours does close down. The maturity that comes from this, I think, you can't put a price tag on that. The education, your, your teachers know here, you can't put a price tag on what these kids learn. And they're, they're your kids, they're from Chino Valley. I don't know how many of them are directly your kids, but they're, they're Chino Valley residents. They're the, the children from the family members. So you have to think about what they're learning while they're out there, the life skills that they're learning. If one of us was to have an emergency in this hall right now, there would be a fight as to who would be taking care of you. That's what they brought, they have the heart, you know, they wanna, they wanna help people. And I see it every day out there when I'm teaching these students, you know? Wow, I can learn how to do CPR, AED, I can save a life when I'm 11 years old. You know, that doesn't come about too often and you have this pool that has this ability to train these kids. We do, what, 30, is that how many we had last year? 32 kids are at that pool. That's what it takes to do all the shifts, to overlap, to keep them part-time employees, which is something else you could talk about later. But when I see these guys and grow up and mature, you know, four years, five years that I've been with these guys and every year they come back, they're teaching me things, you know, about how things are done and how to teach and how to relate to people. So, I mean, numbers are great and money is great, but there's no price tag on what the community is benefiting from your children learning about these things. And I don't want that to be passed up, so.
Brief point of clarification, you said, oh, we run 32 to, to.
Roughly, we do 28 to 30 lifeguards for the year. That's how many we need to run for different shifts. And when we're running the swim program, we have about eight or 10 in the facility. The lifeguard program running, how we run it is a little, well, better than most of the lifeguard programs out there. You'll notice that some of the other places only have one or two lifeguards on duty. That is not right, you can't take somebody out of the pool with two people, they're running incorrectly. So we run it correctly, we have three lifeguards on duty. Those three lifeguards can retrieve a full grown adult from the bottom of that pool, unconscious, and, and use that facility. And while that's going on, they're trained to start to work our emergency action plan, which is to call 911, is to get access, you know, to the medical equipment that's available out there. It's, it's not a, you know, beep beep, hey you, stop fighting, you know, that, that's most of the day. But when the time comes to crunch, these, these guys know what to do. And that's what you're paying them for and that's what they've learned and that's what you have to continue through this. The junior lifeguard program has been amazing. We're now starting to get those junior lifeguards that are available at the right age to become lifeguards. And I know their skill levels already. You know, they've gone through the program that we have. And so you don't really wanna cut that off and have that stuff start up over again, because it takes a number of years to get to that. Takes a number of years to have the people, lifeguards, become the managing skills necessary to become a manager at the pool. And, and all those skills follow them through life. And the way I teach them, most of the things they learn, they're not gonna use at the pool. They're gonna learn it, they're gonna use it at a family reunion, they're gonna use it at, at Safeway. We just had a firefighter that used his skills 35,000 feet in the air over Fiji, you know? They had to do first aid and use an AED on an airplane. So those are skills that these guys have with them now that we taught them, that the community of Chino Valley, that the Aquatics Center taught them. And they're gonna carry that on, they're gonna teach other people. You know, we, we have them come with me when I train the new lifeguards to help with instruction. And so it, it's a, it's a cycle and I know the money's big, as we all know, pools don't make money. The day you built it, you knew it wasn't gonna make money, you know? They do do a lot better covered. I'll push that every single day, you know? You got greenhouses going up around here, one could go right over the top of that place and you could be open year round. But, you know, that's more money. But right now, don't lose what you already have. And that's the skills of, of your, your youth in this area. And they are advanced skills, we're not talking, you know, this is life safety, these, when you send your kids to this pool, you're asking, you know, your lifeguards here to, you know, cradle them and make sure that they don't die out there. If you, you all watch the news, there's a death every day of swimming drowning in Phoenix, every day. You know, and so they're teaching your kids how to swim and they're there to protect them. So, don't lose sight of that. Don't lose sight of that.
You had a question for that individual?
No, not the individual, but just a quick show of hands of how many of these teenagers out here tonight are lifeguards? Cool.
Quite a few of them. Yes, ma'am?
Back again, Lori Heiner. One thing I want to remind the public and the town council is that you're talking $10 and you're saying it as if it's town money. Well, it's our money. We are the ones that put that money into it. And you are our stewards over the money. We want our money spent on maintaining and keeping the pool open. So remember who voted you in there, and remember what happens when the next time comes around to be voted. Because it's going to be remembered by the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? In the gray. Did I get that color right?
Hi, my name is Debbie Correll, and I live on 1 North. And I just wanted to say, I've got four kids. We've been using the pool since it opened. They've learned to swim there with our wonderful lifeguards and swim instructors. And we would be so sad to see it close. I think Chino Valley needs to be proud of themselves. We've built an awesome pool. I've got friends who come from Prescott and Prescott Valley to use our pool. And it's one of the things we use almost daily in the summer.
Cool. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Sherri Brown, and I just have one comment to make. Maybe you could develop a list of some people here who might like to get together with all of you or some of you to develop some ideas for either extending the amount of time the pool is open, or some activities that might bring in some money. For example, a teen night with taking the activity from the pool to the park for a picnic, and maybe some entertainment. That would, I know that that might in some ways cost, but maybe there could be some way of gaining some registration funds or something so that we could, you know, get some more money to help support it. So I would like to suggest that you maybe take a list of people who would be interested in working with you all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. In our list of things that folks have brought up, alternate funding methods, as far as raising more money, alternate funding methods, evening swims, extended season, extended hour, and events. Correct? Okay. Was there another one? Yes, sir? Okay. Thank you. For the recording, a question regarding grants. Are there any grants available? Yes, sir, if you would, please come up and let us know who you are.
My name's Todd Leig, and I'm with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We advise the council on parks and recreation, and we would love to hear from you. There are avenues. We are looking at grants. And Dave Heimy is our director of the pool, and he doesn't have time to do grants. But we do have two individuals, actually, one individual that's writing grants, looking at grants. It's a, sorry, allergies are killing me. But they're all, they're 501(c)(3)'s. And we have two of them that we're working with. And so all donations are tax deductible. And we would love to hear from ideas from you. We meet the first Tuesday at 4 o'clock every month, right in back over here. And so grants are on the table. We do have, John Willoughby is actually working with us and writing grants. And there's a lot of things with Parks and Recreation that are gonna be on the table. The pool is the big one because it's a big-ticket item. But there's lots of things that are gonna be going on. You know, I know that we have Little League is here, and AYSO. And those are some of the things that are on the docket to look at. You know, cutting back on maintenance on the parks, cutting back on how often the grass is mowed, cutting back on whether they're gonna line the fields or not line the fields, make Little League do it themselves. Those are all things that are part of the budgetary items that are gonna be discussed. But if you have ideas, we would love to hear from you. You know, you can see me afterwards. I'll give you my email address. Or you can get ahold of Chris Bartels. He's our staff liaison. And we can work with you on anything, any of the young people that want, you want to do fundraisers, you know? We can facilitate that. And so if you have any questions, you can see myself or Chris Bartels, or call the town. They'll find me and track me down.
Before anybody applauds, thank you, Todd. I told these folks I would try and get them in touch with someone who could help them with the mechanics, so all the fundraising and all of that. This is Mr. Leig. He's the one to visit with. Thank you, sir.
My name is Morgan Heiner, and I'm the other Heiner. I live where the other Heiners live, obviously. And I've been around water, around this pool since we moved in, which is second grade. And I've, ever since then, always wondered where the pool, like, I put in my time and my effort, and I've done junior guarding. I've done so much for this job because I wanted to do it. So the first year I get to do it, just because there's a little bump in the road, it was, oh, the pool, the pool's gotta go. I'm sorry. And the last thing I have to say is, you have to spend money to make money, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I know we're just here from the pool, for the pool. Like, most of us are here for just the pool. But I also want to say, you also talked about budgeting out the other sports, like the Little League stuff. And I just want to know, why are we taking away from the youth? The youth is the next generation. You want them to stay in the town. And I don't know why you're taking away all, like, the pool, the sports. What are we gonna do? Me, as myself, I was kind of a fatter child. And the only thing that, like, got me to actually lose weight and actually made friends and get out of my comfort zone was the Little League softball, going up into middle school with the school sports, which I know schools funded through the schools. But the school sports were funded through the schools. Yes, I know that. But I'm saying the Little League sports is where I started out, like, actually doing my athletic stuff, as well as the pool supports, like, swimming and all those other things. I don't know why we're taking away from the youth when they will be the next generation here in Chino Valley. Because that would just make not a good impact on Chino Valley if we take away from them. Thank you.
I think what Mr. Leig was trying to get across is that pretty much everything is on the table. And when that happens, if you're looking at the senior center, then the seniors come and want to visit with you. You look at the library, everybody's gonna, we're right now at the 10,000-foot. And we're trying to get a handle on the overview of the budget. But as I said earlier, we have one critical path item. A lot of the other stuff, we can wrestle through over the next three months. But we have to make some decisions on the pool quickly. And the first one, as was brought up earlier, going ahead and putting out applications for lifeguards and all of that stuff. We're gonna do that in the hopes that we do keep the pool open, okay? Next. Come on. Okay, yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Lola Smith, and I live off of 2 North. I'm just going to add some stuff that's important. And the first thing is to Mr. Smith. I've been coming to the last four meetings, and I think you have used the word "burden" at least 50 times. And if it is such a burden, maybe you should have taken that job in Texas because maybe it wouldn't have been a burden there. And then, you don't work on Fridays. Your people don't work on Fridays, and a lot of people don't work the 10-hour days. So if it's such a burden and we can't do it, then that really bothers me. And then I'm wondering, can we sell land that we own here for money?
Yes, ma'am. It has to be a council decision, but we can sell land. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, and it's a diddle to everything that was said today. I'm here for the pool. I don't go to the pool because no one's gonna see me in a bathing suit, ever, again. But I am a retired school teacher. I'm doing it for all the kids that I taught at, all my friends who use the pool all the time. And mayor, I hope that you never use that lynch mob term again. Because it wasn't, it was directed to the council members. Please don't do that.
Okay. I won't use it anymore. Thank you. And I did apologize to the young folks because they, we got a lot of time to visit, but I hope I didn't. If I offended any of the rest of you, I'm sorry. I use humor, and sometimes it offends folks. I try not to do that. All right, others? Any others from council? Nope? All right. I've given my card to a bunch of you. If any of you need to visit with me during the week, the town hall has my number, has my card, and Mr. Smith is available. Matter of fact, your whole council is available to you. All right? If there's no other statements or questions, we can, yes, sir? You thought Joe had something? Joe? No, 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 please. It can wait. Are you serious? We can wait? We can go ahead and close up?
It is getting rather late. And his presentation's gonna take 20, 30 minutes as well, and I'm sure...
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're adjourned. We'll hear from Mr. Duffy later.
Hi, Donna. Parks and Recreation. Oh, wonderful.